Please silence your cell phones as it screws up with our antiquated sound system. Welcome, today is Tuesday, April 5th. This is a special city council meeting. A person with a disability who requires accommodation to participate in this meeting should telephone the city clerk's office at 530-274-4390. At least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to make a request for a disability related modification or accommodation. City council welcomes you to attend the meetings electronically or in person at the city hall council chambers located at 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley. Regular meetings are scheduled at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 by Nevada County Media, on the internet at cityofgrassvalley.com, or on the City of Grass Valley YouTube channel. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail, and the number for that is 530-274-4390, or you can email public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by 5:00 PM. Comments received after that will be addressed during the item and/or at the end of the meeting. Council have the option to modify their action on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Agenda materials, staff reports, and background information related to regular agenda items are available on the city's website at cityofgrassvalley.com. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet will be made available on the City of Grass Valley website. Subject to city staff's ability to post documents before the meeting. We do have the agendas on the back as you enter here, if you should wish to have one. Council chambers are wheelchair accessible and listening devices are available. Other special accommodations may be requested to the city clerk seventy-two hours in advance the meeting by calling, that number again is 530-274-4390. You're happy to accommodate. Alright, we'll call the meeting quarter. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Taylor, can you please call the roll?
Member Branstrom?
Present.
Councilmember Hodge?
Yes.
Councilmember Ivy?
Present.
Vice Mayor Arbuckle?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
All five members are present.
Alright, agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes from staff.
Okay, let's look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moves.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, that's unanimous. Any report out of closed session tonight?
Nothing to report out of closed session.
Alright, onto public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390. And email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting and received by 5:00 PM. Comments received after that will be addressed during the item and/or at the end of the meeting. Council have the option to modify their action on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item. If anybody would like to come up and talk about something that is not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to stand up and you've got three minutes at the podium. No, anybody electronically or?
No public comments.
Alright, well, we'll close the public comment. We'll wait until the next items. Okay, consent items. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion by the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on a motion to adopt, members of the council, agency, or staff, or the public request the items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. These are roll call votes. Any changes to the consent counter?
No changes from staff.
Okay, well, and look for a motion.
I'll second. We did have a public comment that was received. Was there anybody from the members of public that wanted a consent item removed for discussion?
Well, so. Yeah, what's that mean?
So our consent items are going to be the Rustic Wood Phase One Approval of the Final Map. And then the United Pentecostal Church Approval of the Parcel Map.
We wish they'd comment on the first item. Okay, so we'll remove item number one, the Rustic Woods Phase One, and have that separate discussion. For now, we'll move on to the consent items, and I'd look for a motion on that one.
Some moves.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. As a roll call vote, Taylor, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Branstrom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodge?
Yes.
Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arbuckle?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Five members say yes.
Okay, item number one off the consent item is the Rustic Woods Phase One. It's Approval of the Final Map, 21 PON44. Sam, is that going to be you or is that going to be someone else?
I will take it.
Okay.
This item before council tonight is a approval of a map that will split a property into two parcels. Basically splitting the main house off that parcel and leaving a remainder parcel. I can't read, I apologize. I'm trying to read this on a broken screen of about 2.3 eight acres. If I'm reading that correctly, it might be a six. Or 2.36 acres.
It's 2.59.
So somewhere around, well, around two, between 2.3 and 2.5. So this is an effort to basically split off the existing house from the remaining parcel. That's the action before you tonight. So it creates that other remainder parcel via developmental parcel.
Any questions for staff before we open it up for public comment?
Are there any current plans for development of the split off parcel, the larger portion?
My understanding, a tentative map has been approved by planning commission for that parcel, but we have not received any plans or anything beyond the tentative map approval.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Please stand at this time and come up to the podium, state your name. Three minutes for public comment.
Alright, go ahead. Thanks. Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this issue. My name is Thomas Birchfield. My wife, Elizabeth, and I live at 2625 Ridge Road in Grass Valley, directly abutting the project that that's under discussion known as the Rustic Woods Real Estate Project. We are semi-retired and we bought a house in 2018 and moved in in 2020. Our house is eighty years old this year. It's one of the oldest houses in that area. Our property butts directly onto the project, including our garage where my wife works in her art studio. Our concerns first center on hydrological issues, namely water. The location for the proposed project is by what we can see kind of rather swampy, and that heavy rains will flood into our property, sometimes running even into our garage, which is directly up against the property line. With the NID reservoir looming right behind a big pile of dirt that you'd see if you drove by. When we bought the property in 2018, we worried that that big mound of dirt that borders the NID reservoir might collapse, you know, in a serious enough rainstorm. We wonder if the property is actually buildable, as we understand, as it seems somewhat like a flood plain. From what we know, the soil that was extremely shallow, only two feet. We know this from a fence project we did last year, and our fence builders only able to dig down two feet for hitting solid rock. So this leads to the question, what will become of the excess water? Will the water be properly diverted, or will we have a worse situation than we did before? We also have concerns, my wife has her art studio on the rear of the garage, only a foot away from construction. Now, this leads to concern about noise, especially dust, as my wife has a few respiratory issues. And as far as fire season approaches, air quality issues, issues, air quality issues will bring high levels of concerns. Just as a little background, I encountered similar situations some years ago in a major construction project taking place right against, right up against my office, forcing me to stop work for like days on end. We also need to know how long the project will take, and we're also concerned about increased traffic. With another project already underway, a few feet, hundred feet to the east, Ridge Road is already very busy thoroughfare. It is likely to become extremely so. It's likely at some point that traffic lights will become necessary. Ridge Road is also a major escape route in the event of a major fire, and something we're, of course, worried about, and these projects could make evacuation more difficult as the population rises in the area. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Bowman D. I have lived at 2657 Ridge Road for forty-two years. I knew that it would be inevitable that that would get developed, but there are a few concerns, similar to Thomas. I do worry about flooding. A little bit of context, in 1986, the property owner, then Mr. Young, like brought in a lot of dirt. He elevated his property like, like two feet. And since then, water has been like seeping into our yard since, you know, they're, you know, two feet higher than us. To divert this, they kind of dug kind of like a trench to kind of prevent the water from coming over, but still there is some water that seeps over. So my concern is that if they were to build, like would that potentially cause our area to flood more? And then similar concerns to Thomas, I do work from home, curious about potential noise. There is a lot of new construction that's going on. They just put it in on a slave creek, another subdivision. I don't know what it's called, but it's been completed across from Ridge Road. There are quite a few units that are being built, so traffic is a bit of concern on my end, but I just wanted to to point that out.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Alright, a digital public comment on this.
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back. All we're doing tonight is just talking about a public utility easement, from what I understand.
No, this project, imagine a large parcel, about 2.5 acres, is being broken up into two parcels.
By the small little corner.
2.3 and then a small little corner of the remaining house. That is the only action under tonight. I think there is a small utility easement also that is dedicated with that, but the major thing is just splitting that parcel.
Right, we're not talking about a development, it's just imaginary lines to separate one piece of property.
Unfortunately, that development has already been discussed by planning commission and already approved.
Okay.
So that's the best, the tentative map has already been approved. So the only thing next that will occur is they have to submit plans. There'll be another final map that would break this lot up into smaller homes, and they would need to follow the conditions of the planning commission that occurred, I think, back in January. Don't hold me to that. You know, if you have specific questions on that, Tom is available to answer those. There will be a drainage component. You know, by basic drainage law in California, they cannot divert flows onto another property. They must follow the historical pathways. So the engineer will be tasked with making sure that any future flows due to more pervious surface being put on, for example, the roofs, the driveways, and that would all have to be mitigated onsite and cannot impact another property.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Do we know that these concerns come up in the or these, is this the first time we're hearing this, these comments, or these concerns, or do these come up during the planning commission process?
I'll let Tom answer that because I was not at the planning commission.
Tom Last, the building director. When this went to the planning commission, I don't, there were no, I believe there were any comments on the storm drainage. I mean, that was a couple of months ago. I don't remember all the details on it. But the tentative map did have a preliminary drainage plan associated with it. There'll be onsite detention that those, the storm drainage will be diverted away, you know, to the streets. And those final plans just communicated, the final map for that will have to confirm the final drainage plan that it can, that will be diverted away from these properties properly.
Someone has more questions on this? Can, is there someone on your staff that can answer these on a one-on-one basis?
Yeah, yes, they can talk up. Is it, some of the details on drainage, storm drainings, probably talk to Bjorn or Catherine up in engineering, and they could talk to Lance Slow for the planning commission, anything with the planning commission details. So Lance Slow or the planning department, or Bjorn Jones, probably in the engineering department.
So I think what I'm hearing is with both a drainage plan and going into storm drains, things should get no worse for these property owners, and there's a possibility that would actually get better. Is that?
Yeah, I would say they're going to get better because they're going to have to capture all the existing drainage, just as each of the lots are designed. They'll have, they'll be draining towards the street or towards an approved facility that will catch that and then take it into the street system or the storm drainage system. So it should divert, you know, the final design should be diverting away from all these homes.
Yeah, and this is just the first part of the process that we see at our level. Will we be seeing more of this as the planning commission process comes to us with the lot split, or is that?
Yeah, so, you know, the planning commission approved, I don't remember the total number of lots now. Was it eleven?
Nine.
Ten, ten total lots. So they approved a subdivision map and they, and it was for two phases. The one was to, what the action is you're reviewing, you're reviewing tonight is the recordation, the first phase, which is just to break, break away that existing home from the remainder of the parcel that home's going to remain. The property owner plans to redevelop that house and reuse it, and my, what I hear is occupy it, and then they will eventually come back and for a recordation of the map for the other nine parcels. And that will, that will be the action the planning commission will have, or the council will have, is just again, the final map as you're doing here tonight. It'll just be accepting the improvements and accepting any, you know, the final design of the plan. So all the technically, all the public hearings and all the, that process has already taken place.
Alright.
Yeah, so I understand that what we're doing tonight is, we are not voting on the project, we are voting on the parcel split. Can you remind me what the zoning is?
It's hard one up there, residential, single family. Yeah, and you're voting on just, you're basically accepting the improvements, correct, with the final map of, I guess, council is doing.
Where the initial lot split. We're not, I don't think it talks much about the further subdivision.
Yeah, it's just the initial, it's the first phase of the, of the map, which is the separating the single family house from the rest of the property. And so that's the action you're taking, that you're accepting that, the final map for that first phase or the parcel map.
So like we're kind of talking about here, it'll come back again at some point with the subdivision lot map?
And it'll be a consent calendar item, because all the final maps typically are, but you know, it can be pulled, but again, it will be, have the final design of those already approved tentative lot lines.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, well, I would look for a motion on this item. We have a motion and a second. Let's see here. Taylor, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Branstrom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodge?
abstaining.
Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arbuckle?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Four yeses and one abstaining.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, now we have our administrative item, City of Grass Valley Strategic Plan Update. It was last updated in 2020. Sam, are you going to be taking this one off?
Yes, I will, but I need to get a PowerPoint up here just for a quick second. So for the record, Tim Keating, your city manager, we're here tonight to discuss the City of Grass Valley Strategic Plan and looking at updates for the 2022 year, for lack of a better term. Kind of going back in a little bit of the background for the strategic plan. This concept of a long-range strategic plan was developed for the City of Grass Valley back in 2018. The purpose of a strategic plan was and still is to provide a set of goals, or as I prefer to call it, a roadmap for staff from which programs can be developed and adopted to help direct the city's future strategies and projects. If someone you were around for the original strategic plan, but when we did that in 2018, this was developed with input from the community focus groups consisting of assorted interests throughout the community and community leaders. We also had several public meetings at that time, too. The community contributions, basically brought together a whole wide of different discussion topics, which we took that information and then developed what's before you today as our strategic plan. And from the city standpoint, this is a very much a livable document. We, in 2020, during COVID, did a brief update, which we did everything over Zoom as much as possible, and basically confirmed we did not make any major changes at that point in time. Most people felt that the direction we're headed was still in the proper direction as far as priorities. So our goals with the strategic plan was originally identified as seven core goals, and they're listed here. Community, sense of place, transportation, recreation, parks, economic development, vitality, high-performance government, equality of service, public safety, and then water and wastewater systems and underground infrastructure. In the agenda package is our strategic plan. You'll also find it online, and in the updated version, you will see in green text below each of the objectives and projects showing accomplishments and worst tax that were tasks, excuse me, that have been completed from its inception in 2018 through 2020. And we just completed an update from 2020 through 2021. So it would be another two years, and those are shown in blue, and if you look at the document, they're quite clearly shown. Won't go into too much more detail there. So a list of strategies and projects were established for each of the goals in the community plan. These were put forward by city staff and then finally approved by council. These strategies and projects will be reviewed by staff each year as part of our budget process. So when we do projects, we look at the strategic plan to make sure that the projects we're putting forward are meeting those goals. Everything we kind of do, we look at the strategic plan. We use it as a roadmap, as I kind of said, for staff. So that's why it's important for us to make sure it stays up to date, and it reflects what our community desires, so that we're doing the projects, obviously, that our community is desiring and moving forward with. So. So a couple of the slides that are also in the community, the strategic plan, just for background, there's a bunch of different information on the city itself. One of such slides discusses household income, and this will be important because one of the major things that we're going to bring up and comments received today involves housing. And there's a couple of things to note here. If you look at the household incomes for us, over two-thirds, probably about eighty percent, make $75,000 or less. So when you look at that, what they can afford by the old home loan formula I did is four times your household income, you know, puts you about $300,000. Median income in this city is $37,000, which is fifty percent lower than the state average. We have a lot of people that make less than $25,000 in our community. That's higher than ninety-one percent of the state average. You know, you might want to think about those a little bit, but it also shows our demographic that we are, we do have a large senior portion. And a lot of those people are basically unemployed and living on retirement, so that would explain sometimes why those individuals have very low incomes. So it's not necessarily meaning every person here is making a low income, but we are having some issues there. The other side of things, our city does not have a lot of folks with household incomes above $200,000. So that represents only four percent of our population within the city. That's seventy-one percent lower than the state average, so that's a shocking number. Just, there's obviously some other tables that are in the strategic plan update that would encourage people to look at, but this is the other big item, is the median home value. The bottom two numbers come from surveys that have been done from the Census Bureau. The top one is a zero number because we do not actually have 2021 numbers through the census data yet. That will come in time, but I think it shows that housing prices have dramatically increased in our community, and wages for folks or household incomes are not staying on par. The other thing, just quickly going through the strategic plan, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but the strategic plan also established mission and a vision and some city values that are shown here. So far, with the comments we've received, they still, at least the input we've received, everyone still believes those should still remain our mission, vision, and keep the city values. That gets to updating this document. So staff has done a couple of things to date. One, we've had a couple of community surveys online. One of them is shown here in the table. It's a little hard to read. I'll just do kind of the highlights. It shows the overall scores. It shows, we break this up between the outsiders respondents compared to those that responded from within the city. And the only thing really of importance to kind of notice here is the top three things are fire, believe it or not, which is not surprising. For the city, then it changes compared to outside respondents, which I would assume it would, would, because for city patrons, trails and streets are pretty much, can't speak tonight, statistically about the same between two and three. And then we move to police, which would be a close third or fourth, depending upon how you look at it. And then lower down, we have low-income, affordable housing and homeless issues as far as housing those and providing services for those. When you look at the outside respondents of the When you look at the outside respondents of the city that is also important for us to look at, their ranking is a little bit different. Trails, parks are their number one priority. And that would make sense because the city has, you know, both Nevada City and Grass Valley pretty much has a park system. For Western Nevada. Fire was two, which would score similar to what we had. But then things like low income housing or affordable housing, depending upon how you wanted to find that. Dealing with homeless support issues rank a lot higher than they do with our existing citizens. And to a certain standpoint, that makes also sense because if you're outside the city limits. City roads are not gonna be higher in your priority to get fixed if it's in your neighborhood, whereas if you're a citizen, you know. The road in front of your street is important. Similarly, with police services, very important if you're in the city of Grass Valley and you want a police officer to respond. If you're living outside the city limits, you rely on the sheriff's department. So I could see why those are a little bit lower. It's more information. I don't think we should draw huge conclusions from this. But we did a couple of other surveys that are contained in the uh strategic or in the staff report, excuse me. Uh if people have information on those datas. Uh as part of that, we also had some open ended questions for people just to provide comments. Which were also uh focused mostly around housing, fire, parking downtown and Mill Street. Some of the comments were for Mill Street, some of the comments were against Mill Street. But the majority of the comments, when you started looking uh about those kind of things, those are what we got. The third I or the second item as far on this list, the stakeholder meetings. The city held three stakeholder meetings with the same groups we met with or invited the same groups of people that we met with back in two thousand eighteen. And those people came from various groups. Some of them were longtime community members. Some of them were young families. Uh we had this time some downtown, a downtown business owner. We had someone from Habitat for Humanity, a historian, some other concerned citizens, the Chamber of Commerce. The uh former council member and also Measure E committee member. Someone from the Center for the Arts, a couple contractors, a realtor. Someone from the uh Contractors Association and someone from Hospitality House. In two thousand eighteen, we were actually more successful to actually get more people. We had people from education. We had people from Sierra College. A lot more diverse. I would say we had three meetings. We averaged probably twenty to thirty people as far as stakeholders in each of those meetings. This time around, we averaged about five people um participating. So it was down a little bit. Tonight, all those comments have been included in the uh staff report and are available for council's review. And the final step of this is tonight to gain more public comment from the individuals that are not only here in the audience. But also um from anyone that provides a comment online. And I should not forget, we did also have, looking into the audience, we did have someone from Wiltshire Alliance in attendance. Providing some comments to at one of those meetings. So I apologize, I left him off the list of people actually attending. So kind of next steps. Obviously, receive additional input from the public tonight. Staff would then be looking for comments from council. And then our goal would be to go back and revise the objectives and projects. Based upon the comments we received tonight. And return to the city council with an executive draft. So hopefully incorporating comments that we've not only heard from the public, but also have heard um from the council. And they're kind of giving just the two minute overview because I want to be kind to the folks that are nice enough to show up today so they get an opportunity to speak. The majority of the comments um from the stakeholder meetings were very supportive of the goals that we have. They thought those were all in the correct direction. We should continue moving forward. The two or three items that I think we do not necessarily put to the depth that folks would like. One would be fire. And that's um looking, I group fire a lot of things into fire. So it's not only maybe looking at more personnel. It's also looking at how do you deal with vegetation. It's um some concerns. Actually, I threw some concerns in with homeless starting fires and how do you keep that from happening? And then also evacuations, which I think everyone. Has experience with the RV project, that that is a big concern in our community. And I think it will continue to be a big concern in our community. With projects as they're brought forward. Housing was probably the next, if not on par with fire, it was the next. No one really had solutions. They just said, we need to be able to provide more housing. And from contractors, uh everyone is understanding of the difficulty with housing right now. Prices of materials are going through the roof. State requirements are going through the roof. But what can we do um as a city? To reduce that. And there are a couple of suggestions that were kind of looked at that um when we get into that area, I can provide those to you. Obviously downtown parking is, I'm probably repeating something that has been heard numerous times. So. With that, that's kind of the uh initial input from staff. And uh turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Yeah, lots changed since we had this uh strategic plan. We've uh coming out of a pandemic. Got inflation, which is insane, uh along with really, really high gas prices as well. So it's not the same time as what we was created this. So any questions for staff before we? Open up public comment or did you want to just go dive in to?
Tim, I just want to clarify, this is an update. Is is there a time at some point in the future where we will do a full blown new twenty year strategic plan? Or or something akin to that, where we can get more public input and actually really go out and aggressively get that?
So my feeling is this is a living document. So every year, you know, we kind of got off track with COVID. But my recommendation is every year staff is holding these public meetings, meeting with stakeholders. Because it's our opportunity to see if. We are accomplishing what needs to be done in the community. Also, at the other side, it's their opportunity to tell us what we need to be changing. And you know, I don't know if eh at some point in time, we will need to revisit this whole thing. But my thought is if you keep doing it on a yearly basis, um we should be good for another five. Or so years at least, and then look at maybe doing it from scratch. Kind of starting all over and making sure that um the project objectives have been met. And my main point by then is we should have hit most of the short term projects and most of the medium term projects listed. So then that would be an opportunity to hopefully say that the long term projects are now short term projects and we have the ability to add. If that makes sense.
I'm just concerned about the decline you mentioned in responsiveness to the uh groups that you held. That going forward.
I believe that part of the issue of why we did not have more people attend was because of COVID. We were in that funny phase when we did the um outreach. It was still um full mask wearing, everything had to be about Zoom. And frankly, I will tell you, the out, the turnout was better when we had public meetings. People wanted to come and hear what other people said and. The last one we had actually was our best attended and that was when we just ended the mask requirements. Uh so I think if you wait a year, you will get a lot more people involved.
So is there a way also to name the thing so it doesn't say general plan of two thousand two? Or something like that with an update? Uh can we rename it every year if we're actually updating it so that it shows that it is current?
I believe we could just add two thousand twenty two strategic plan if that was council's desire. If that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, it's just been confusing to me personally. When I pick up a strategic plan and see, it's it's really, really old. Not knowing that necessarily it's been updated.
Are you talking about the general plan?
Maybe I'm confused. Maybe I am talking about. Yeah, okay, okay, see. So I would like to just label it for each year, not as just an update, but this is the strategic plan for this year.
Yes, we can add that to the title.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff or comments?
I don't think I really have any questions too much, but that perhaps in the future, I'd love to play like a little bit more of a. Part of the. The initial data gathering and or like maybe we can shepherd some more specific. Dialogue, so we could have a housing breakout or a whatever, you know, I don't know, but maybe. Have a plan in place to dive a little bit more into the details of some of the aspects, some of the recurring major themes. Of the strategic plan. If that would be a public meeting or I'm not sure how that would work exactly, but.
Well, you can bring it up today. We can start the dialogue.
You know, one of the things that I, you know, because finally we're back out of COVID. For the most part and things are opening up and we're gonna have um. You know. Downtown's gonna be open again. I I would like to see as once we can figure out a way to do this. To have like a um public and you know, like for Thursday night market, have a uh city hall, city council booth. Or where people can come and have those conversations with us and know that every Thursday, we, one of us. It's gonna be that we did that several years ago where each one of us signed up to um. To take plate, take, you know, take a diet and we we were there. We represented uh the city, the city of the city council. I think Mark was there with um his fire guys and Steve was there with police and then we had public works and. So that the public could have the opportunity to knew that on this Thursday, if you had questions about. The strategic plan, let's say. I think that that's something I think you have. You kind of opened that conversation by saying that, but that's one of the ways that we can do it on a a little. More of a a fun, consistent, not intimidating us versus them kind of kind of environment. So that it's a little more easily, the the conversation flows a lot easier, I think.
Yeah, we can go to the people.
Yes. It's so much more productive that way.
Okay, well, at this time then I'd like to open up the public comment and hear uh. Hear from you all. So at this time, please come up and uh state your name and what you would like to talk about.
Well, if you're gonna be first, we know.
Good evening. My name is Lebron. I serve as the behavior specialist for Grass Valley Animal Control. And I'm here to advocate for funding in our strategic plan for a new shelter. There's a variety of reasons why I feel it would be beneficial to add a new structure to our community. The first is that uh shelter is seventy three years old or so. Um and while we've had some updates, um it's completely antiquated. My background is in shelter and I'm like, I'm the only person in accounting with an active credential in animal behavior. I carry the insurance and licensing to do the job safely and effectively. So here's some of the things that we need that we're lacking. So we need a multipurpose room because we need to be able to educate our public. Attract people in through that process, which will turn into volunteers. Which we can then train and create labor product resource, which we can then leverage easily into grants for the for our city. So most of the grants that are offered are based on how many hours we are generating and the costs associated. With those hours that we're creating in our community and it's this guy, a couple of other people. So we're really limited in that area to get funding. Um another thing is that we can dramatically improve outcomes and improve public safety. Obviously, enrichment is important and having bright shiny things is important. You can all imagine the benefits of having more enrichment for. Community animals, but uh very much this is something enrichment directly decreases the accumulation of stress hormones. In our dogs and uh it's these hormones that cause our dogs to make bad decisions and put our public at risk. So enrichment is actually imperative to creating a safe outcome when it comes to adoptions. We can include dramatically improved placement compatibility as a result. We're also lacking a quarantine area um to decrease the spread of diseases and the cost associated with treating them. As well as an area to quarantine appropriately, dogs who need to be protected from the public because they're not quite ready. We don't have facility to do that in public all the time is walking into restricted areas, um which is not good. It's dangerous. It regresses our dogs, puts our public at risk. Some extent. Um also, we don't really have an appropriate exercise yard. Um so going back to enrichment. We lack in that facility. We also lack in the ability to socialize our animals as a result, which is a pretty considerable public safety risk. We also lack the ability to provide our community with ongoing training resources like our county can. Because we just don't have the facility to do it. We don't have the room to do it and we don't have a yard to do it in. And those are all things we can do to decrease public uh risk, improve public safety. Um and improve improve the longevity of the adoptions that we're creating. We have a really special thing going with PD. We work very well in concert with Captain Joe Medioni. Um and Officer Carolyn Figoni, and I'd like to leverage that. Thank you.
Good evening. Ralph Silverstein, resident of Grass Valley and president of CEA Foundation. I'd like to kind of pull back a little bit. And you've uh Bob, you mentioned the general plan and passing, but really. I think we need a new general plan. Our general plan was a twenty year plan and that was twenty twenty. There was ending. And that's a visionary statement, the kind of guide strategic plans and all the things that go on in the city in terms of growth and. And goals. So that's something I I think we really should be bringing forward to help guide this strategic plan. This strategic plan, I think, has a lot of good things and I think the city's done a lot of great things. I really have to commend. Tim and and staff and the the board for for what's what is accomplished. I think it's great. I would add a few things. Well, there's uh some comments about greenhouse gas emissions. There's a. There's improvements for trails, walkways, tree planting, Mill Street. Electric charging stations, public transportation. These are all things, but what are they being driven by? There's kind of an elephant in the room and the City of Grass Valley hasn't really come out and said this, but we're in a crisis due to climate change. That the world recognizes that, the federal government recognizes that, the state recognizes that, Nevada City recognizes it. I think Grass Valley should make a resolution saying we recognize that climate change is a crisis and that should be a guiding thing. It should be one of the goals in this document, which helps really impact everything else that you decide. So when you're deciding whether to have. A parking garage, just think, well, in terms of climate change, you know, what should we do to make this better? We want to maybe not recommend so much driving, get people to walk more, encourage them to use public transportation, put solar panels on the roof, lots of things that could be done. So it should really kind of show up in in all the strategic strategic planning. And uh this is another ask, it's kind of a big one, but. It would be great if the City of Grass Valley would, in recognition of the climate change crisis and the importance of it. Recognize that the proposed Idaho Meredith Mine will use over ten thousand metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions a year. Which is a hideous amount. And so a resolution saying that you do not support this project would be very useful in in accomplishing that goal. I think also in the support of a lot of other people in the community. So and then finally on housing, uh I don't know if I have enough time, but anyway. With housing, there's a number of recommendations that I've I've suggested in the past. I don't know if you've already gotten much traction, but there's some things that. The city used to do and that was on subdivisions, all subdivisions that were of a certain size had a set aside for affordable housing. I think it was ten percent, which required for these projects and that was waived in two thousand eight. Because the contractors were really suffering. But now that they're not suffering so much, they have tons of work, it is a profitable market. It should be put back yet. That will help. It takes time, but that will help. Another thing is the fee structure of the City of Grass Valley is not conducive. To building small affordable houses because it's a flat chunk fee. There's two main flat chunk fees, but one of them. Should be set to radiate upon the size of the house. So ten thousand dollars for a one. $10,000 for a one-bedroom house and $10,000 for a four-bedroom house. Obviously you can have a different development impact. So that could be stair stepped or, or made, you know, adjustable. Those are two things. There's a few other things that you could do as well. I'd be happy to sit down and talk about them some more. Thank you very much. But one more thing, please, could we be added to the stakeholders list? I thought we were on that. Thank you very much.
You're on.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Jonathan King. I live right outside the city limits, but I actually own some property in the city limits too. And, uh, thanks for this opportunity. And the, I'm active with the Wolf Creek Community Alliance. Oh, I should also say I want to support comments from previous two speakers. Whatever Leon says about dogs, believe him. And if he wants more money for a better facility, he knows what he's talking about. Fabulous dog whisperer. And I also want to second Ralph's comments to, um, some of the, um, great things that I see in this, uh, strategic plans have to do with Wolf Creek and the trails. They are really important parts of the strategic plan that you've got that we've been working on, trying to get a trail all the way through town. Uh, we've been working on it for years and years and it is getting closer every, every decade. It seems like we get a little closer to it. So, and actually it's really been great to see the progress that we've had on that recently. What, you know, the, um, I just would want to suggest that every time there's any kind of development on a parcel that's adjacent to Wolf Creek or any of the other creeks in the city, that special attention be made to them, to that development project to, um, be really clear to the developer to honor the setbacks that are required to the, to the development. There's, you know, the city has a part of the development code requires setbacks of at least 30 feet from the top of the bank. And, um, it's, it's easy to forget that. And, um, it especially along Wolf Creek, it's important, even if the trail is not going to maybe be right in that area, it's important for the, the riparian, um, success of the creek to maintain that setback. It, it's not just the creek. It's also the corridor that the creek runs through. That's important to protect. And, and it's part of the enhancement. It's part of the enhanced, you know, the enhanced experience that people have when they walk along the creek. It's not just the water in the creek. It's the 30 feet is bare, is a bare minimum. And so it just, uh, I just want to re- remind everybody that how important that part of the land use and development code is to, um, to keep the, uh, the setbacks also are, are, are a very important part of that. Of a creek protection and, and will help the trails that will, that we're trying to do along the creeks. Just be that much, much better. So thanks again for your help, for your, all the work on this.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Ready, set. Hi, I'm Rebecca Hahn. I've lived in Nevada County for 40 years. I moved here when I was five. No. So thank you, Tim. This is a great thing that you're doing here. I know I'm a little late to the game. And when I saw that it came over the transom, this, you know, this week, I wanted to come here to say that my, our, our daughter Sophia, who grew up here in Grass Valley, you know, Nevada County, she works for Gell Architects, which is the number, one of the number one premier international urban planning, uh, survey companies in the world. They do cities all over the world. They're hired to do. Sophie has called Grass Valley before and offered her services. And she's now in the States. She works in Denmark. You know, she lives in Copenhagen. She works in Denmark, but she's in the States for the year because she's been contracted out to Google to do the Google campuses. What her company specializes in is exactly what you guys were talking about. It's how do you survey your community? And it's a real, they've developed a very complicated and sophisticated method. Because sometimes you may say, this is what I want, but that's not really what you do. So she, their company, that's their specialization is how do you interpret what a community wants and needs and how does that affect your strategic plan? She's in the States, like I said, for a year and she's going to be in and out of Grass Valley. And I spoke to her the other day and she said she would be very happy to meet with you pro bono right now for a while and just work with you in terms of survey ideas and how to engage the community that way. It's a really sophisticated, like I said, she's worked Buenos Aires, Barcelona, you know, all over. So I'm offering that service for her because this is really important. You know, and one of the things is who's your demographic? And that'll be a big thing of how she would, you know, help you think about this. So I'm offering that up.
If you'll wait till after the meeting, I'll give you my.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, great. But anyway, thank you. And absolutely on the shelter, you know, I'm a retired veterinarian, you know, absolutely on the shelter. We love everything Ralph does and, uh, yes, on the trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else like to? We don't bite, I promise.
Evening. Uh, my name is Michael Anderson. I am the co-owner of ClientWorks, which is IT services company in Nevada City, lived here 33 years. I'm also on the board of Northern Sierra Broadband, which is a brand new 501 C12 public utility, um, for broadband in Nevada County. And we have a, a, a project that we're building that Buck Mountain Estates off of Highway 39. Got a hundred and $20,000 from Nevada County to support that project and, uh, we're about a third of the way through that. Uh, very exciting project, but it's our, this was our way of showing that we can do this in a nonprofit fashion. The, the demographics are very concerning, you know, the, the family situation. Um, I've been here 33 years, as I said, and I've watched the families, um, as robust as we'd like to see. And, uh, the income here below, what is it? 31% below the state average that, that we, we need to get those numbers up. Best way to do that is with jobs and, uh, COVID obviously showed us that, you know, people can work from home and broadband is the way that they could do that. So then I noticed in the, in the strategic plan that it mentioned that Race was working with the city. I was curious if there was an RFP that was involved in that process. Not necessarily interested, um, for Northern Sierra broadband, but, um, I do think that I'm watching throughout the state how this process goes. And the best way to do this is to have, um, analysis of your, of your demographics, your economics, and have somebody who knows how this stuff works, give you some recommendations. So, uh, there are, you have competitors, cities that are competing with you for, for people to move here and people to thrive here and, and Placerville is starting, um, a process of a municipal bill. Chico is doing that as well. Ranger Cordova and Uva City are also doing reviews of municipal build and, and these are overbilled, which means they're going on top of something like Comcast, which creates some issues because being able to do the take rates there to bake those projects pencil is, is, can be very difficult. So, these, this is a broadband is a very complex subjects, complex subject, and, um, it does require some, um, some good numbers to see what you're doing. So I, I really would recommend that. And, you know, you've got, um, SBE 156, uh, state funds, about, uh, three and a half, uh, billion dollars for rural California. And, uh, so you might be able to get some of those funds and then obviously the infrastructure bill was passed, um, in the fall and there's, um, I, I understand 75, um, million dollars coming from the state and about the same amount from the feds. So that's coming into Nevada County just for us. So in the next four or five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Can I ask a question? Or is it only public comment?
It's only public comment. You can ask the question and at the end we could go to staff. Let's public comments over. See if we can answer it for you. Okay. Do you want to go up there and ask the question?
Oh, that's what I was wondering. Hi, uh, woman again. I'm just have a question regarding the strategic plan. So I know you guys want to address like homelessness, um, housing and so forth. Uh, I guess I'm curious, like, what is the plan of attack and how do you know you're tracking the right direction? Like, what, um, I guess, um, how do you know that you guys are addressing homelessness or is there, is there a public place that we can see on our end, like what, what efforts are being made?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. Anybody else have some public comment? Going once, going twice. Do we have any public comment from the email or telephone?
We do. And it is a voicemail. Let me get it ready to play.
This is Matthew Coulter commenting on the supposed strategic plan for 2022. And maybe you could add in there emptying the trash cans on Mill Street and picking up the broken glass and picking up the feces that is all over the street from the pigeons, possibly opening the Neil Street Elizabeth Animals Park for the children to be able to use and not the contractors. And on that note, the meetings that you have with your club members, of course, everybody is going to agree with your direction. These are all the yes people. They're all on your payroll or will benefit financially from what you guys are screwing up. So why are you surprised that everyone is in agreement, just like the city council that votes in unison? Things would still pass if it was three to two, but it's always unison. We just lost a huge amount of low-income housing at the corner of Brunswick Road and Nevada City Highway, all those cabins. We keep losing large chunks. We lost a house there on Quokpack Avenue, the city bought and demolished, which is against the city charter. We continue to talk the talk, but nobody walks the walk. As far as fire goes, Memorial Park is a total fire danger. There's piles of dry leaves over there. They're from last year, last year, all on Colfax Highway. Public Works is over there all day putting in one light bulb on a building and they can't clean the leaves off the roof of the Cub Scout and Girl Scout building. It's never been done. There's piles of dry leaves on top of that old beautiful wood building. So when you guys think you want to make a plan to do something, back to the basics, back to the basics, go smell Wolf Creek. It's a sewer trough. It counts in the worst condition it's been in my entire time. I've been here in over 50 years. Going on 55, it's scary. You guys are insane. Good night.
And that is the end of the public.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will, uh, last call for public comment. All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion.
Wondering if we have a short break before we.
Okay, now that we have had public comment, let's bring it back for discussion and some counsel input. Who would like to start off? Start off?
Sure, yeah, I suppose. This has been great. Yeah, there's lots of great input, lots of great accomplishments in the past. Look forward to building on those in the future. Really appreciate all that hard work that's gone into that. I, you know, as housing becomes more and more of a major issue, it's something I'd love to take. A little more time to, to have dialogue about, to maybe make some specific actionable proposals. Maybe take this plan a step further. So I'd love to have that dialogue with the rest of the city council. And I know for legal reasons, it's hard for us to do that. We talked a little bit in the past about having some similar with the county does, which is a huge undertaking, right? But to have the retreat in public with breakout groups. And I know that takes a lot of staff time and resources. And in lieu of that, I just, um, I picked the housing issue because it is something. And we all care deeply about, but, uh, and I just wanted to propose a few actionable baby steps. For us to, to potentially talk about more in the future. One of those is I'd love to talk more and more about our Airbnb plan or our short term rental plan. I think there's a tactful middle ground there that could help get a few more houses in the rental market. I'd love for us to get more information on the housing market as a region. So as a city, it's hard to, uh, look at that data set because, uh, the city boundaries are invisible, right? So, um, and there's rental markets outside that. So I'd love with the county and with the city of Nevada to have, access to more information. I know that some of the metropolitan areas spend time and money doing this. Maybe you heard this report in the Chronicle a couple of months ago about that they audited San Francisco. And there is eight or ten thousand vacant homes, right, or something like this. See, you know, that's the type of information that can help us make decisions. That's property taxes are the, the lifeblood of, of small governments. So, um, as well as how do we, what's the nuance of our housing market? How do we approach that? So I don't know how that, what, how that's an actionable step. Maybe we reach out to the county, maybe we, I, I actually propose this to Cal Cities. They didn't think it would go very far. So, uh, but maybe y'all should propose it to Cal Cities as well. You know, maybe it's the type of thing that Cal Cities could champion that could, as a region. Or as a Sacramento region or as Northern California region, that's the type of thing that's easier to study as a region. I'm not sure. I'd specifically like, um, in our planning process for us to use the median income of Western Nevada County. And the city of Grass Valley in lieu of the entire county. The entire county's income is not representative of Western Nevada County. Eastern Nevada County median income is in six figures. So in the planning process, it's a very small point that I've got to make in here today. That when we say this project is below median income or, or market value or whatever, usually we're using county data. Now, that statement doesn't play a very large role in the planning process. But if we could be more accurate with it, it helps us contextualize the conversation. It's a first step. And so I'd like that to be part of the process. And I'd just like, I guess, these baby steps to maybe be the segue into a larger conversation. Like, I started this conversation off with about some of the suggestions other folks have made about, you know, density bonuses or, other, there was lots of specific ideas that I won't reiterate right now, but that I'd love to talk about more. And I'd love to slowly integrate. Uh, I think it's possibly time for the city of Grass Valley to unroll a small housing package. These are small changes that we're making. If you're, um, you know, you hate to, to compare a local with someone who's recently moved to town. That's not the purpose of any legislation. But you also hate to not have a place in the conversation where we're acknowledging right now. The, the community fabric that's getting ripped apart as folks can't live here anymore, as their children can't move back. As their family can't stay together, as folks have to move apart. So I'd love to see a part of that package where we choose to subsidize, the fee package that it takes to, to build or, or create a home, to, to add on to. I guess a lot of steps like this, you know, in, in, in that nature. I think there's room for us to put together a package that, that takes some small hurdles. Housing's still going to be really expensive, but that says the city of Grass Valley is taking these five small steps. We want to subsidize, we want to underwrite, we want to take care of this fee package. We want to, even though it's thirty thousand out of five hundred thousand, we want to, we want to take that small step. So, um, right now, we have the means to do that. And I'd love to further that conversation. I don't know that tonight's the night to dive into the details on all those things. But, um, there's a lot that we could do. So that's what I'll start with.
First off, uh, let me thank the staff for coming up with a good report, uh, first to start with. And thanks the public for their comments in the survey, um, and also for coming in here. It's really valuable, uh, to me and I think all of us to hear that. Second, I just want to say, I'm really lucky to be on the council. At a time when previous councils have done a lot of hard work to help us recover from past recessions. Rebuild the city's finances and to make some really good decisions about where we're going. So a lot about what I want to say about the strategic plan is kind of looking backwards. And saying, I want to continue to do what previous councils and this council have done over the last year. In terms of making Grass Valley, here's my first priority, as attractive to young families as we can. And that's means better roads and sidewalks to make a more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. It means making sure we maintain our police and fire for good public safety. Means continuing to grow what we're doing in the parks, means continuing to expand Wolf Creek Trail. Which, uh, as Mr. Keen mentioned, we're working right now to extend that through the city out to Sutton. I want to put this on my wish list. I would love to see it cross the Wolf Creek Trail. Or excuse me, across Wolf Creek, lower end of what we call the Wolf Creek Trail now, and extend it out to North Star House. I think people would love to be able to ride their bikes or take a hike, that extra mile out to North Star House. So that's kind of on my long term wish list. Getting back to families, that is a really important thing for us to pay attention to. When I first started looking at Grass Valley as a place to live years ago, I ran across a graph that showed the age demographics. And basically, we had a whole bunch of families up until age eighteen. And at that point, the age numbers dropped sharply. And we know that's because a lot of those high school graduates are leaving the area to go away to college. But that continued until about age thirty-five, when it started to ramp up slowly. Until it kind of got back to a, a solid level at age fifty-five and above. And that donut hole is where we are missing young families. And we're going to die as a community if we don't really do stuff to invite young families here. Housing is certainly a piece of the puzzle. And I support Tom's desire to have another discussion about housing in the community. We've already done great approving lots of stuff, but I think there's more we could do. My personal interest as someone who lives in multi-family is I'd like to see more multi-family developments here in town. I think it's a good way to increase our density and to provide housing to people who live here, who may not be able to afford a bigger home. And that multi-family could either be for purchase or for rentals. The other piece of it besides housing, and I've been hearing this for years since I moved here, is we need broadband, we need broadband. Mr. Anderson really nailed it for where we are right now in the process. COVID nineteen showed us how dependent everybody is on having good internet. And the federal government has recognized that. The state government has recognized that they are putting billions of dollars into broadband. And some of that, a lot of it is designated for rural areas. And we need to be part of that. That's what's going to attract small employers. That's what's going to attract people who want to telecommute. That's what's going to help our local businesses, help our local people who are living on a, uh, some people still on DSL. Some people on Comcast. This is the moment, the, the opportunity is there. It's a once in a generation thing where people see the need and the money is there. My personal preference is municipal broadband, but as Mr. Anderson said, it's complex. We have regulatory issues, um, there may still be constraints, competitive issues. I'm not an expert in this. I see the need for, I see the opportunity. And I, I think we really need to bring some expertise in to address this. And inform us so that the council can make an educated decision about where to go with this. But I really think we need to do this. If we do not, Placerville, Rancho Cudova, other places are going to outcompete us. And we will lose any competitive edge in technology, for, for example, that we have now. If I'm a small business or looking to move a business, if I see Placerville up high with fifty, has solid band broadband throughout their city, that's where I'm going to go if I can't get it in Grass Valley. Um, that's, that's really what we're coming down to economically now. And that's what we need to do to bring in living wages. That will bring up our median income and start bringing more money through the community and helping people. Another issue that the city's been working on for some time. We've been having conversations with NID about Grass Valley joining NID. Most people don't even know that a good part of Grass Valley that receives its water through the city, isn't part of NID, yet that's where we get one hundred percent of our water. And I'm focusing on this both as a water issue, without getting into technical complications. It, it helps us on, um, clarifying water rights issues. But I'm approaching it from a democracy perspective. We do not have a voice in where we get our water. And I think we need a seat at the table. And the city's been talking with NID. My understanding is the current board is very receptive to Grass Valley joining NID. And I think we need to nudge this forward. It's, it's important for our future to have a voice. The final thing I want to bring up, a big thing for me. Looking at the strategic plan, we talked about our history and, and preserving and honoring our history. We go back as far as the gold rush. This area and the people living here, some of them were here before the gold rush. We need to honor the, the people who were here before the gold rush, the Nissan on. And we need to support them in their efforts to be recognized as a community. And I would suggest that what we need is to have the city, probably through the historical commission, invite, uh, the, the Nissan spokesperson, Shelley Covert, who happens to be a Grass Valley resident. She lives here. Invite her to come talk with us and let us know what can we do to help? This, this, this is really important to that group of people. And I think the community at large is, we want to acknowledge that this group has not always been treated well. Whether through the gold rush or through the loss of federal recognition in the last century. And I think we need to step up and say, and ask, what can we do to help?
Thank you, Bob, for that last point. It's really important. I'm just going to go through a couple of things. One of the things that I think that was brought up tonight is the issue of scientific surveys. And so when you ask a question, depending on how you ask it, you will get a different answer. And you will get a different answer depending on who the demographic is. And this is something that's really important in informing how we move forward. And so I really appreciate, uh, that point from our community member. Because if you ask people what they want, of course, everybody wants a closer parking space. I want a pony. I, I get it. It's fine, but that's not a strategic plan. So I, I do hope that we can be more scientific in our, in our surveys. And, and in the way in which we communicate with our community so that we can get the answers that are actually serving our future. Think that's really important. I appreciated the comment about fee structure and stepping stones for, um, you know, different size units and things like that. A lot of that unfortunately is determined either by the county, the schools, the state, et cetera. Um, but I think where we can have some leeway, we should. And I think particularly with ADUs, um, accessory dwelling units. We might be able to have an opportunity for more housing in that direction, which I think is, a good idea. In talking about climate change, this has to be a focus of everything that we do as humans for the rest of our lives. And I think that's really important. But I also think it's important to think about the energy returned on investment or E R O I. Overall, we can cheer for, you know, wind farms, for example. But how much, uh, energy is put into building giant towers of, you know, things? Whose land are we mining? And is it an overall return on investment for the earth? That's just a, it's a very bad example. But I do think that when we have these conversations about climate change, that those are the things that all city governments across the planet, need to be talking about. Little things, I really appreciated the comment about picking up trash. I just want to let the entire community know that anyone in this community is welcome to do that at any time. And we would love for you to help. I walk to work every day and I pick up trash on the way and on the way back. So help yourself. Super excited. Love the enthusiasm. SB one fifty-six and rural broadband, we are not in the first set of funding. But hopefully Nevada County will be in the future. Please call your state representatives to let them know. Um, I would like to see the in-grounding of utilities in the future, support for the arts. I want to talk about fire and resources, particularly when it comes to things like brush clearing. I think that we talk a lot about personal responsibility, but when you have an aging population on a fixed income, they don't always have either the physical ability to do the brush clearing or the financial ability to hire someone. So I think, um, any community resources and especially help your neighbors, everyone, please. I'm, you know, if you, if you know that your next door neighbor just can't do it, offer to help if you can. And then one of the things that isn't a part of anything that we've talked about, but is something that I'm very passionate about, is eliminating invasive species from any of our future plans for development. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Okay, everybody, this has been a great session. I mean, I can hear that I echo what everybody is saying. And Tom, to speak to what you want to do, I think we absolutely need to. We have done a very. We have done it very sporadically in the past. And every time that we did do it, do I, and it was called a workshop so that we can have conversation instead of presentation. And uh it was always very beneficial. At one point, we actually had quarterly meetings between the county and the cities, all the cities. And we had a main topic and we were able to have a conversation, face-to-face conversation. For whatever reason, they um stopped happening, but maybe it's time, I think, uh, I think with Covid, if anything came out of Covid, it gave the people who aren't necessarily engaged an opportunity to become engaged and to realize what they wanna be engaged in. And I think now that we can go back in person, we would have more response, more response and better participation. I can't remember a strategic goal, special meeting where this many people have come and spoke. Usually there's one or two and they're the same ones that always come to our our council meetings on a regular basis. But this, this one, everyone, I think on, amongst a few, you, everybody spoke. You know, and had an op- have an opportunity to say what it is do you want, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? And I so appreciate the fact that several of you acknowledge what we are doing right, that helps us continue to do right. So um for me, housing has always been an issue from the time I moved here. Um, I have a son and two grandkids that cannot find a home because uh prices are too high, they would love to move move back up here, nothing's available, uh it's either it's just out of there, there's so many reasons why not, but there, you know, but the conversation has always been that we need we, we need to define what affordable is. Affordable in Grass Valley is not affordable in Walnut Creek. So we need to take that out and I don't know how to do that, cuz I say, I have said this for years and years. But I don't know how we take that out of our vocabulary, because it's not affordable housing, it's housing for our working families and families especially. Uh, and to speak to your point, families are, they have, they move away because there's no job. There's no place for them to live, even if there's a job, most of them are willing to 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 drive. But now, again, you know, there are some good things that came out of Covid and the ability to telecommute has become um real. But in order to do that and attract those families up here, we need Mister Anderson's broadband. And we need, we've talked about having broadband up here and I know that I, I when I was in Washington DC, we had another discussion about rural broadband. Rural broadband means so many different things to so many different people throughout the country, because rural America is different in California than it is in Tennessee or Alabama, it's just different. And so for broadband, I, my understanding, what I have been told repeatedly is that it doesn't pencil to bring that that fiber broadband up highway forty-nine and out to the ridge, it doesn't pencil, if it doesn't pencil, nobody wants to do it. And in order for us to have the housing, to have the families, to have the jobs, we have to have the broadband. Okay, I'm done now.
We all get ourselves bucks.
Exactly.
Well, there was a lot of
Can I say one more?
Yeah, yeah.
I forgot all about one of my hardest thing. Eli from that animal shelter, we, I am absolutely one hundred percent behind you. We need, we need a place to have a shelter, because it is so critical. Um, I used to live in in the Sacramento area and Sacramento, uh SPCA and shelter is like a model, if you go in there, they have everything that Leela Eli is talking about, everything. And they're, they give their animals place, so in fact, they have waiting lists for their animals. Because of what they do, so I, I'm right there with you. So, thank you, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
That was great. One of the things about going last is most of the things that I, I was gonna talk about, have already been discussed. One thing that um uh was really passionate to me was um attracting young families, that was one of the reasons why I got on the council, because there wasn't a lot of representation from somebody my age with, I didn't have any kids at the time, but I planned on and now I have two young kids. Um, and so that was a big agenda item for me. And as you get older, your perceptive, your perception changes. Uh, you live your life, you get older, you now wanna play a little bit more pickleball or go play golf or do different things. Where a young family, you have hardly any time to do anything yourself. I'd love to go play golf, but I can't, I've gotta go to T-ball, I gotta go to softball. I gotta take my kids on fun walks, so we've utilized a lot of the things that we've implemented in the last several years. So it's been a huge uh eye-opener for me, seeing the fruits of the labor from this uh previous plan. Uh, one thing that's really uh hot ticket item right for me right now is there's quite a bit of development within Grass Valley. You look around, you see uh Loma Rica Ranch, you've seen developments like uh Berryman Ranch that are still going on. There's Ridge Meadows, there's the Slate Creek Development, there's a lot of housing uh actually being worked on right now. Uh soon to be built up, there's housing that's been approved that is tied up in litigation, but there's multi-family housing like apartments uh in Dorsey Marketplace, so a hundred and seventy something units, if I remember correctly. That would benefit those young families, uh it's market rate, there's something that they could get into. Uh, and I think it's really important that we uh, we encourage that multi-family, so I'm really hope that happens. But with all this housing and development, we have the need for more services, police and fire. With more housing, uh there's more needs for those services. So we do have a vehicle in place, we have measured, it's a tax measure to go towards uh that we generate from sales tax, to police, fire, parks and roads. But hopefully that uh that is enough to handle that, with all the new development, there will be fees associated with that. Um, but that's something that I think that we need to look towards the future uh to shore up and really reinforce those departments so that we do have uh the services that we are accustomed to. We're fortunate to have Missouri, because we have a lot of the great apparatuses that the other cities do not have. Other things I'd like to look at would be um energy. It's important that we look at energy, it'd be great to have more solar fields to uh power us up in the event of a public safety power shut-off. I, I don't know how that works, but I think energy independence would be a little bit nice. We are starting that process by discussing with uh the folks at Pioneer. But I think that that's important, along with water as well, I think water is really uh, you know, we had a wet winter for a little bit, but then, now look at us, we've had nothing, very, very none, so. Yeah, I, I know, I was gonna plant tomatoes too. So there's uh the animal shelter, you touched on that, I think that's important, um very important. We have a very outdated shelter, I don't know, I toured that a while ago and I brought my family, it was a little depressing with that, with that facility, so I think that should be uh on the list of priorities. Um, ADUs, I absolutely support um that housing workshop that you talked about. I think we do need to set something up, have a housing workshop, bring the community in, discuss. I know that um there are certain parcels within the city limit that meet uh the surface area to build an ADU, but they're not allowed, uh and they're residential. So there are ways that we can tweak our existing uh land uses to allow more of that. Um, and I think putting certain potentially, I I'm big on property rights, but I think it's important to have opportunities for families, so uh long-term rentals versus the short-term rentals would be something that would be important to look at. Broadband, yes, I have a lot of friends that uh have looked and moved out in the Bay Area to various places, uh none of Grass Valley, yeah, I'm working on them, but uh to various places outside of the cities, I'm still classified as Bay Area, but we need better broadband, um and parking were grass valley. I know we have some lots, but I think it's important that as we uh develop our downtown and work on our plan for Mill Street, uh that will bring more folks up and we need to get some of those parking lots uh worked on. And walkability, we trails, Bob, I am, I was here when that sinkhole happened, I just watched it happen and it's love up and it was absolutely atrocious, but we turned that into something that is a gem for our community. And I look forward to expanding that as much as we can, ideally as fast as we can. Uh, because the more we have, the more it brings, people love it, people love it, my kids love it. It's shaded and it's beautiful, that creek is absolutely gorgeous, and when they first put that in, um I thought, oh, it'd be great to have a little trail down by the water and here we go, we got some, it's great. Uh, expansion on what's uh, what's already there. So uh that's my input uh for this strategic plan twenty twenty-two. Put the title in there, um so I look forward to uh the next process of the step. Implementation.
Kinda make a comment on the comments.
Yes.
I, I appreciate all the comments here, cuz one of the things I constantly tell people is it helps to have diverse viewpoints. Because other people see things you don't and um that's really helpful. You know, wanna thank Hillary for mentioning climate change, cuz that's one of my big issues, I totally agree. Uh, I think it was um uh Mister Silverstein may have been the one who said, you need to reorganize the strategic plan and just have a climate element. Um, because we need to both react and respond to what is happening and it's gonna get worse. But we also need to um see if there's anything we can do or what we can do to actually, you know, reduce um the problem of climate change and uh, um so thank you for that Hillary. And Jan, I, I didn't ever know that the county and the city used to have meetings, so I appreciate you mentioning that, I, I think that's a great idea.
No, it was great, but until they just, they stopped and I, I don't recall why.
I'd love to see that.
We haven't had, had them for a very long time.
Yeah, uh the one other thing that I, do you mind if I jump in again? Was homelessness, uh woman had a question, can you refresh my memory what your question was? How we're doing on homelessness, how we can track it?
It was more a question about like, yeah, like how are you addressing this, like how do you know you're tracking the right direction?
That's a great question and it's, that's difficult. I mean, you, you, with homelessness, there's a wide variety of that. Uh, you get folks that are from the community, get into uh bad times. They get kicked out of their place, now they're trying to find a place to live, going out in the woods, uh there's a lot of uh youth homelessness, so with bright futures from youth, we uh, we get reports from them and they say, yeah, there's quite a bit of couch surfing kids. They're not technically homeless, because they're in a, they're under shelter, but they're, they don't have a place that they call home on a permanent basis. Um, you've got folks that uh are transients that travel from all throughout the United States or from California or vice versa, it's, there's folks that uh, you name it, that, that's, that's an element. So it's really difficult to track, there's um the count, what do they call that, the time and place, um you know, and we work closely, our police department works closely with the uh the shelter than we have uh Utah's place. Uh, they're, they're actually working on expanding their services, they're working on a, buying buildings and having a place for homeless veterans, it's another group that I forgot to mention, there's so many that I can't even remember all of them. And how do you really track how we're doing? Well, it's, we as a city, we really don't have the services here, we work with the county. So on a day-to-day basis, it's not the council or city staff that's working with the, that issue. It's the police department and the fire department and they're directing those folks to the various services as needed. So if somebody has a, a drug issue, uh there's ways that they can get into some kind of program. So there's county programs, state programs that they navigate, some people uh openly uh say, no, I don't wanna do that, some people uh say yes, but they have to say yes, uh we can't just throw them in there and make it happen, uh it's really a tough subject, it's something that I think will remain for my lifetime and my kids' lifetime and beyond, it's been homelessness has been around forever uh throughout history. It will, uh could happen to me, could happen to you, uh who knows what can happen in the future with uh our health, uh we have to pay a billion dollars for hospital visit and then now what? Uh, I can't pay my mortgage and now I've gotta figure it out. Um, there's so many people that are down on their luck and they really, there's there are services out there, it's just navigating them and hoping that they take in those services as best as possible, some people succeed, some people don't. Uh, but the county works really, really hard, uh the Department of Public Health and and our police officers are really the, the ones that are on the front line uh with all of this. And I can't imagine being a police officer right now, uh in this, this trying time, you've got folks that um are in record numbers uh on the streets. Um, when I was a kid going to San Francisco, there'd be a few homeless people here and there, uh but now there's ten cities and it's uh kind of, it's, it's shocking, it's shocking to see, like how did we get here? How did we get to this point? How are we going to fix this? And um you know, elected officials like me that's only here for a few terms, I, I don't have the answers at a city level of how to solve that issue. I, I really don't, it's, uh I wish I did, there's been people that have been in politics their whole life and dedicate their career to it and it's a really bad issue right now. Um, I think that there's policies that can be implemented uh that are a little bit better than what we have now to help that. But um it, it's something that's exceptionally difficult to uh to really uh say, hey, we're doing a good job or we're doing a bad job. I would say that overall uh humanity is not doing the best job right now, especially in California. Where there's tremendous amounts of encampments, tremendous amount of drug use, alcohol use. And I think that that uh really is a contributor to a lot of these issues, as well as why how, housing is so expensive, if you were to build a house today, costs you X amount of square foot. Whereas ten years from back in the day, it was a, a lot less, there's a lot of these policies uh in California where you have to have certain lighting, you have to have a fire sprinkler, you have to have a certain HVC system, a certain efficiency. It all adds to that dollar of housing, you know? People can't afford it, now what? So um I hope that kind of answers your question. But it's such a, a difficult question to answer.
It's not just like homelessness, but like how are we tracking with housing? How are we tracking with infrastructure and so forth. So I was just wondering from a public perspective, is there's a way for us to get line of sight to see like what initiatives are being done and what's being done.
Yeah, so for like housing, we've approved quite a bit of projects that you've seen throughout our community. We've got Loma Rica Ranch, tons of housing, that's market rate. There's been a lot of apartments that have been approved, market rate apartments, Dorset Marketplace, a hundred and seventy something units. Those have not been built yet. Those are in litigation. There are other apartments on Bennett Street. Those are being held up. They were built yesterday, but there's the county issues and other issues that prevent them from doing them. So from my perspective, if you have more housing stock and it gives an opportunity for more buyers to get into homes. Economies, you have supply and then the demand will drop. Granted, there's so many people have second homes, you know, Bay Area folks will buy up here. Or they'll sell their house down there, move up. Quite a bit of folks that have moved up, done a migration. Make an offer for a hundred thousand over the asking price. Boom, they got it, but they still have enough to buy another house somewhere else. So it's really tough for folks locally to compete against those Bay Area folks. And what do we do for that? How can we do it? It's a market-driven thing.
Can I have a suggestion for public who is like really interested in benchmarks? We do have annual reports, but I think probably the most interesting way to see what's going on with the city and what goals we're meeting is to come to our budget hearing. That's probably the best way to see what the, what the inner workings are looking like. It's long and you have to like numbers, but it's, it's definitely informative.
So thank you for your question. I went on a long expedition.
I have, I have one comment on the comments, which is that we've talked a little bit about the shelter and I will tell you this. If you are thinking of adopting a shelter pet, please go to the Grass Valley Animal Shelter and look at those pets. I have a few of them and they are the love of my life.
I gotta wait for a few more years until my kids are responsible enough to So Tim, does that give you enough direction for this plan?
It gives us enough directions that we will bring back something probably a little bit of a red line to executive draft so you can see what the changes are. Adding some of the elements and then also adding some probably some more projects focused around housing. And some of the other things that you've listed here today in addition to the community. So we'll bring that back and have another option at the for additional comments.
Excellent. Thanks, Tim. Okay, with that, the last item is brief reports by commissioners. Tom, you wanna start it up?
Went to a meeting, steering committee for the one of the alternative high schools, construction trade programs. Funding's getting cut. Pretty disappointing. There's this, it's a very cool program. It's a it's, you get high school credits for learning some entry-level trade skills. I'm a huge fan. You can use all the help and the trades we could get up here. So, yeah, funding is getting cut. Joint High School District Board Meeting. If you haven't had enough of small, small-town politics. That board meeting is tomorrow. And you can find out more information on their website. Right, I, I didn't participate as a member of the city council. I just participated as a local contractor. That's it for me.
I think so. Bob. Tim, the League of California Cities Legislative Update and the legislature is gonna keep us busy. Like the amount of legislation that's coming in, we need to get track of. I'm so happy we have the league helping us with that. But a lot coming down the pike. And on a more fun note, this is the Sacramento Region, so I think five county region, national or regional photography month. And currently, the Nevada County Camera Club has not one, but two exhibits in Grass Valley. One is at the Center for the Arts, which has really high, beautiful photography. And the other just opened at Courtyard Suites, which was the result of a photo contest called a challenge. Where you're assigned a grid and you have to come up with something from your assigned grid. And the emphasis is on creativity. So you find less highfalutin and more creative things that are really interesting. One of my favorites is there was a, someone was assigned the grid that included Big A hamburger place. And so they took a place at the counter and then they made a box like you're inside the Big A. And then they put a multimedia box of a little container of french fries there in front of the picture, like it was on a table. So anyways, it's a fun, fun exhibit to go see. And that's, that just went up on Saturday and it's up for the month of April, so. I highly encourage people to see it.
Yeah, there's a lot of wonderful offerings for the arts. I encourage people to check them out. I know there's a lot of things coming up. The ERC will have their first in-person meeting since COVID at seven thirty on Thursday. So I'm looking forward to that. That's Nevada County Association Realtors. And I know that our small businesses and our downtown association and, and so many of our nonprofits are really starting to get back to business. There are many, many offerings this month. Please check your community calendars. Don't miss out. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Jan.
Let's see, I attended the GBDA and Chamber meetings and did some Zooms and some webinars kind of things, but I just want to highlight two things that are coming up in the community. April twenty-third, we're gonna have the car show. It's back. So it'll be in, in downtown Grass Valley. And then on May twenty-first, it's a new event. It's gonna be Armed Forces Day. And again, more information will be coming out on that and where we're gonna highlight. I shouldn't say we, the chamber is going to highlight the active and all the branches of the military. And again, downtown, but more information will be coming on that. But there are two upcoming events that are being sponsored by the chamber. And, and for the Downtown Association, so. Things to look forward to.
Thank you. I spoke too much, so meeting adjourned.